All right. For being present and it's a quick time on the 8/22 meeting of the Wisconsin planning board to order. First order of business, a public hearing, John and Alicia West subdivision application for multifamily home. 728 Garden Road, tax map R3 lot 47. We're off the middle with the private, you can grab a chair and bring it up, you'll be here eventually. Are any members of the public who need this project explained? Not active. There is plenty more members of the commission.
I make a motion to close.
I did.
Yeah.
There's now a motion to close. Is there a motion to close, second?
Okay.
Thank you, all those in favor, closing the public hearing. Two minutes. All right, first order of business is approval of the minutes of April 24th, 2023. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
There's a second, 22nd, any air admissions, questions? All those in favor. And then I'm supposed to present everybody. And that takes us up to, guess what, John and Alicia West. The multifamily home, 728 Garden Road. We just returned from the site block, we're all there. Let's say it was patently obvious what you're going to do and where to. Well, wait up. So. The motion to accept the plan is complete?
Yes.
Yes. Is there a motion to accept, the application is complete?
I saw motion.
Second, 22nd. Any comments or questions, comments, all those in favor, find the application complete.
One of many.
Yeah, so the first page one just talks about that all of the materials were submitted after the April 24th meeting in advance of tonight. So my recommendation was to make it complete, which you just did. So pages two through four just talked both through the application, comparing it to the general requirements and standards defined in the subdivision ordinance. And going through and describing how the project complies with each of these standards. I found that it does comply with both the general standards and the design standards and therefore recommend you approve the application.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody had time to look at the plans and the materials?
Been there on the site visit, I make a motion to approve.
All those in favor? Motion to pass and approve, project is complete and approved. You're gonna have to get. Dan to bring in an unfolded copy. Okay, and they folded the registry, we'll not record them. Oh, okay, so we won't be able to sign that one until next meeting, but you're approved, we will sign. Two paper copies. What you do, three, one stays in the file.
All right, can I get a, will I be able to get a building permit?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I get a building permit tomorrow?
Yeah, he's got X number of pages. So a couple of new people that have turned their copies. I would suggest we. I won't take on this time then.
Why don't we just put the three on the table there and then we walk up inside? Yeah, it is fine.
I mean, normally we do expect them all.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
So if you don't sign, that's your issue. Those are wheels, you want me to wheel it open again?
Yeah, I will.
I will.
Hey, what's up?
I know where you get it, I get my office supply that listed. Does that have to be in black? No. So we're here, you're right down. Jackie, will you bring one back? Mr. West, those are the other two of yours. And like I said, Dan asked us to consult with the company to sign and just go on. Yeah, we'll sign it. Then X number of days comes, I say X, does that have to look at that? Uh, the next water must start.
Anything, is there anything I need to do, I can just come in tomorrow and.
You should be very much planted tomorrow.
All right, excellent.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sorry. Good luck, thank you.
Next story of business. Is Mr. Louis Cataldo, the site plan review for a flea market at 720 Bath Road. We don't know, this is the name of Mrs. Cassidine property.
Correct.
Next to.
So.
Would you like to explain the project first, please?
Yes, sir, my name's Louis Cataldo. And what I want to do is start a small flea market between the Miss Wiss Casket diner and, which belongs to Heather Pitcher, Pitcher. And Wicked Goods Treasure, which is my store. The reason I want to do this is because the Montsweep flea market is going to be closed this summer. And the future of it is unknown, I don't know what's gonna happen next year or the year after. Very questionable. That flea market brought a fair amount of business to my, to my business, because when they were coming in to go to, go there, they'd stop into my place. When they were leaving the flea market, they'd stop into my place, you know, the vendors and the patrons that went there as well. So I saw, you know, a fair amount of business on the days that it was open. So when I heard that it was gonna be closed, I said, wow, that's really disappointing, maybe I can do something about that. Also, those people that came to that flea market stopped at a lot of the other businesses in the area as well. Gas stations, convenience stores, restaurants, you know, they, they went to a lot of places in town here, which is a good thing, I believe. And. It's not a real big request, I don't think, all I want to do is walk off that parking area in front of the restaurant. So I can have tables there. And there won't be any tables left there, they're gonna be brought in by the people that are coming to the flea market to sell. I might have some tables back on the grass beside the restaurant, but not out on the, out on the parking area. Don't use any water or sewer. I won't alter the land in any way, I won't use any electricity. And the traffic will be much less impacted because my flea market will be much smaller. And getting out of the two driveways that I have there will be much safer than getting out of mountain road. Where the flea market was, that was quite treacherous, cars pulling out of there, trying to come this way is, is really a rough deal. So it'll be, the traffic will be better off than it was with the other flea market. I hope you can make a decision with this fairly quickly. Because the season is already, you know, partly gone and wanna get this in operation if possible, if you allow it. And I think it'll help me and I think it'll help other businesses in the area. I got my map here, not that great, but. On short notice, like do something together, I hope you can understand what I've got there. The diner, if you hold the map this way, the diner is up in the left-hand corner. And the area that I have colored lines around is the area that the vendors will be in. And on either side of that will be parking, parking between my store. And the. The flea market itself and parking on the other side between the flea market and the kayak business. We're not gonna be near any property lines, other people's property lines, because the kayak abuts one side of it. And my property abuts the other side of it, so I don't see there's any issues there with property lines. You got any questions, so I can answer for you?
Same indicated it's 125 feet from the Miss Wiss Casket diner to. What, something there for left corner?
That's to the, to an area over there where there's some trees by the kayak store.
And the 150 is to.
150 is from the street back to the, back to the back part of the parking lot beside the Miss Wiss Casket diner.
Any questions for you?
The question I had is from the, looking at this, from the barrier over to Wicked Goods, how wide is that?
From the barrier over to Wicked Goods? I didn't measure that, but. I would say it's about 100 feet, it's about the same width as what we're gonna have there. It's, it's close to 100 feet.
Let's go to the final standing, it's 90 feet from the building to the. Barrier, what is this barrier?
The barrier will be like a rope barrier that we can take down at night after the, after the. Flea markets closed up, just a rope barrier, just to keep cars from going in there where all the vendors are gonna be. You know, maybe it'll be safer that way.
Is this gonna be open every day?
It's gonna be open Wednesday through Sunday, weather permitting, of course. Because that's the same days that my store is open.
Right.
Sure, so in reviewing this application, I spoke with Mr. Cataldo by phone. And as he just mentioned, he said that it can be operating from Wednesday through Sunday from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Weather permitting, and he anticipates up to 20 vendors to participate, who will be bringing their own tables and merchandise to the market. So it's not like the Montsweep flea market where the tables stay there.
Right.
That's correct?
Right.
As far as the application fee, I talked to Mr. Cataldo by phone, he hasn't paid that yet. It's two cents per square foot of floor area, so in speaking with Carl by email, we both agreed that it probably should be the vendor area. But I wanted to confirm with you, Mr. Cataldo, so when I. Do the vendor area around the rope entrance, I think it's actually less than 14,000 square feet. So, you know, and I just did simple math of 60 plus 62 gets me 122 feet by 90 feet. And that came in at less than 14,000, so I didn't know if there was any area that I should be calculating. In addition over here, you know, if this barrier was extending or if this number's actually slightly less.
Yeah, I just kinda estimated it, I didn't measure it hard.
That's okay.
There's, there's a jog inside a building down that side too, the, the building sticks out further.
Okay.
So I didn't, I didn't really measure completely, but I can, I can do that.
Because if you do just, if you just make it a rectangle, you know, 90 feet wide. And then the 60 of the lawn area and then the 62 feet that encompasses the tar area plus the ground lawn area comes to 10,980 square feet. So that would be a smaller application fee, I'm asking, okay. So in terms of going through the submission requirements, there's a couple things for the board to consider. One is that, yeah, applicant is applying on behalf, on a property that he does not own. So, you know, we should probably get something from Mrs. Pitcher that she authorizes the use of her property.
I got it right here.
Do you, okay. And then also typically you require a property deed to be submitted, so it's up to the board as to whether you wanna acquire that.
Are you leasing this property from her?
No, I just got an agreement to do it with her and then she's gonna get some of the profits.
Typically, we require that an applicant submit an area location map, so I just did that on behalf, just for the ease of reference. Did that on behalf of the applicant, so you'll see attached to my memo, I have the tax map. So you can see, you know, Wicked Goods Treasures and where parking lot number two is gonna be is the lot 5B that I've identified in the yellow highlighter. And then 5A, which is this rectangular lot here, is where the vendor area and then, you know, Miss West Casket diner and parking lot number one will be. And then I've also provided a Google or aerial, just so you can see it from a bird's eye view. So typically, we also require a survey site plan. Given the nature of this project, I figured it's up to the board to determine if this drawing is sufficient. Or if we would require a survey site plan to be submitted as is required in the town site planning ordinance. And then other things to consider in terms of the application, which Mr. Cataldo started to speak to, was the amount and type of traffic to be generated as part of this. You know, details on how many parking spaces would be provided in areas number one and two. Any traffic impact with cars entering and exiting onto Route 1. If there's gonna be any material stored outside, the mountain type should be described. Typically, you require evidence of financial and technical capacity to complete the project. And we also require that there be provisions for handling any solid waste or trash that could be generated as part of the flea market use, if there's gonna be any generated. So you'll see also in my memo, I just highlighted the sections of our ordinance in terms of submission requirements that aren't missing. Most of them have to do with the survey and then those other details that I just described, such as the parking, any outside storage and things of similar nature.
That was a dumpster right there for any waste, but I don't anticipate much being generated either. You know, it's gonna be carry in, carry out, just like anywhere else we do it, I mean. Then I have a court body on site for, for anybody that needs to use the bathroom.
Is there gonna be any true?
I don't think, no, no for me. There was a woman that sold pies over at the other one, I don't know if she'll be there or not, but it might be something like that, possibly.
All right, let's go through what Emily's highlighted. Make a decision. I don't think we can waive getting a copy of the regeneration of both properties.
Say that again?
I don't think we should waive getting a copy of the deed for both properties. Disagree with that? And, all right, here's Wiki. Survey, I'm not gonna comment.
Honestly, that doesn't have, I don't think we need a professional survey, but yours is an estimate. And I don't see how we can approve something with a hand drawn estimate, because it's not legal. So. It has to be something better than that without going through the huge expense of the survey, but when you don't know how far it is from where your barrier is to the building.
I didn't think that was, I could have easily measured it, I'm sorry.
The whole thing is relatively tough, you know, to be, for actual measurements, my opinion as one member. Read those guys and girls.
I agree. So we're agreeing, then need something better than a hand drawn sketch. All right, do something better than a hand drawn sketch. I'll go straight down to the respective lines or adjacent parcels within 250 feet, but I think that's generally the location thing and covered by the tax map and there. That's my opinion. So the dumpster is private pickup, right?
Yes.
That should be part of the written answer, yes. And amount of type of materials we stored outside, a few tables.
Yes, possibly, yes. Nothing out front, any of the tables that are left will be back on the grass beside the restaurant.
These things essentially should be part of a narrative from the use of provisions for handling, when you write this, that it's, I'm set a piece of paper pre-cut. That it's, a dumpster will be shown on the plan.
It is.
Right, yeah, it will be shown on the plan and is 25 by private, also private definitely. There are books that probably tell us not of traffic or flea market, not able. And you do need the site distances, site distances. I have to make sure I look it up, but it's four and a half feet with your 10 feet back from the white line or something like that. I mean, I, sitting in your car, you gotta be able to see basically 10 times the posted speed. Both directions. The air ordinance should be consulted for the exact purpose, but it's not a hard calculation, once you have the numbers. I usually, when I do it, go out and squat. I actually like squat, then the second person, I go, they go down the road till I can't see them. Traffic impact analysis. And it may be safer than, probably is safer than the other one, but that's not traffic. Safety analysis, impact analysis, which has to have some idea of what. Turnover might be expected. And maybe you have those kind of numbers from. The existing one and just scale it down, this thing was, there was 20,000 square feet of vendor space and I've got this many cars on the set or even you're half that.
That was there for so long, I don't think you even planned anything.
No, no, I don't think there's a formal obligation or.
Yeah, that's been there forever.
Estimated cost and evidence of financial capacity, doesn't sound like you're really doing much as far as.
It's maybe the course, it's just getting it together, but.
If I have to spend a lot of money on it, it's not gonna be worth it. It's not a big moneymakers to draw, draw people in, you know, that's, that's why.
And it's not, we're trying to give you a hard time, but if anything became of this lawsuit and this is what we improved it on, we'd be liable.
Yeah.
And we just need actual measurements, you know, something drawn out on proper graphic or something, or even pass it, but we're all dimensionalized.
So does that mean another meeting in two weeks?
Oh, yeah.
I think we're done here then, if I, if I don't get started soon, this isn't even gonna be worth it.
We have to have, we have to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
In the site block, which like we did for these four days.
Yeah.
They were, they're needed, they're needed. Sorry about that one, it's a big call. But yes, this will be at least one more.
Yeah, well, I tried. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time and.
You still want to tap the application fee?
I do?
Yeah.
They used a lower number.
Yeah.
Yeah, you used lower.
Yeah. All right, thanks a lot.
I'm sorry, yeah, no problem. I have no other, no other name of business. Emily has a workshop coming up.
I do, so I have two coming up, if you're interested, the first is Thursday, we at the Lincoln County Council of Housing Commission did a housing study in terms of advertising. Across the county, and so we're presenting the findings of that report and then we'll be releasing a report on Thursday, that's at 4:30. In person at our office as well as Zoom, so you're more than welcome to attend. And the second workshop we're doing is on June 5th at 5:00, and it's about LD 2003, which is the changes to housing. That came down from the state, so, you know, requiring, allowing, the towns are being required to allow accessory dwelling units. Increasing density, they have density bonuses if you're in affordable development that's in a growth area. So we are hosting a second workshop, we did one last November, the recording is on our website. But we're gonna have a second on June 5th at 5:00 PM at our office and on Zoom, if you're interested in attending to learn more about that. The ordinance review committee has been working hard to make change, draft changes to the ordinance, they met again this evening on it and. again this evening on it, and so it will be applying to this asset as well as every other municipality across the state, so if you wanna learn more, please feel free to just swing by our office, Andrea.
And, so at this point, a new member whose name. He is not Andrea, his full name.
Andrea.
Andrea.
Who is it? Andrea.
Joyce.
He was the chair of the other committee.
Yeah.
Still got that.
I need.
Time.
At this time, it's 7:30 TAM time, I made my favorite motion that we adjourned.
No second. He doesn't even remind you, Lester, I don't even wanna get out of here, but.
All those in favor, raise your hands. Good night, everybody, thank you.